Welcome, everybody. Thank you for being here today at our ERS Board of Trustees Candidate Forum. We appreciate those of you attending here in the room, as well as those of you who may be watching this online during the actual election itself. Also, welcome to our two candidates. We appreciate y'all being here today, and more importantly, appreciate your service to the state of Texas and your willingness to serve on the ERS Board of Trustees and put yourself out for election to that position. Today, the purpose of the forum is very simple, just to give our voters out there an opportunity to get to know a little bit about you, your background, your qualifications for the position, also just to get to understand any perspectives you may have on issues that maybe come before the Board of Trustees. The ERS Board is the critical piece of the governance structure of the ERS system, make important decisions about benefits, about our investments. And so, we, again, appreciate your willingness to serve and look forward to getting to know you a little bit better today. And with that, I'm going to throw it over to our moderator, Catherine Tesser. So, thanks, Catherine.
Thank you, Porter. As Porter said, I'm Catherine Tesser. I'm the Director of Benefits Communications here at ERS, and I will be the moderator for today's event. I'd like to start by introducing our candidates in this year's election. Last month, we certified that the candidates here today met the qualifications for candidacy. At that time, we drew randomly for the order in which their names will appear on the ballot. They are seated in that order, and that's how I will introduce them. On the audience's left is Brian Barth with the Texas Department of Transportation, and next to Brian is Diane Ruiz with the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. Candidates, welcome to today's event.
Thank you.
Now, for the rules of the forum. Each candidate will have three minutes to provide opening remarks, then we'll move on to questions. After opening remarks, I will ask questions and give each candidate three minutes to respond to each question. Audience members may submit questions in writing. You might have picked up a card from one of the tables just outside this room. If not, please raise your hand, and a staff member will bring you an index card and pen. They will take the card from you when you're done. Due to our limited time, we may not get to all questions. We will omit duplicate questions or those that do not relate to the purposes of this forum. After the question and answer period, each candidate will have three minutes for closing remarks. A recording of the forum will be posted on the ERS election webpage for voters to reference during the voting period. Finally, out of respect for candidates here today, we ask that you please hold your applause until the conclusion of today's event and refrain from any actions that may disrupt the flow of the forum. We also ask that you place your cellphones on silent mode. And that covers the ground rules for the audience. Now, rules for the candidates. The timer in front of you will start each time you were directed a question. The green light means it's time for you to start. The yellow light means you have 30 seconds remaining. The red light means you are out of time. We ask the candidates to please be respectful of the lights, and when the red light comes on, please end your comments. Our timekeeper will be keeping us on track. With that, let's hear opening remarks from the candidates. Each candidate will have three minutes, and we will go in the order they will appear on the ballot. First on the ballot is Brian Barth. Brian, the microphone is yours.
Thank you. So, again, my name is Brian Barth. I'm with the Texas Department of Transportation. I've worked for the department for next month. It'll be 37 years. I'm also a current Board Trustee right now, so I did do this six years ago, and I still find it's a very important role to play. I believe that the ERS benefits, the ERS fund, the ERS system is a very important thing for the state of Texas, and if the state of Texas is going to continue to hire the best of the best, if we're going to continue to recruit the best of the best, we need to continue to provide the benefits that ERS provides in both the healthcare and the retirement benefits. The other thing I think is very important is, you know, the state of Texas is making commitments and promises to state employees and retirees, and we need to make sure that we keep those promises. And the decisions that I make on this board are geared towards those things, that we're able to keep those promises to state employees that deserve these benefits and work hard for these benefits. And if, again, if we're going to continue to hire the best of the best, and I think we do hire the best of the best, we need to have these benefits and continue a stable benefit package.
Diane Ruiz?
Hi. Good morning, everybody. Thank you for allowing me to be here today. I truly do feel blessed and honored to be here. And, Mr. Barth, I want to thank you for your many years of service. I hope to one day be in as a state employee as many years as you have.
Are we old?
No, no, not at all. But my name is Diane Ruiz. I've been a Texas state employee since 2011, and I currently work for the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. I graduated in 2007 from the University of Texas at San Antonio with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science and Psychology. I volunteer within my church community, and I previously volunteered with some nonprofit youth sports services in San Antonio, but prior to working with the state, the state being my second job and hopefully my last job, because I do wish to retire from the state. But I was employed in the private sector for 15 years, over 15 years, until that company decided to shut down its Texas operations, and they relocated to Minnesota and to Florida. So, I do know firsthand what the stress and anxiety is of having an unknown future, and I know the importance of having strong, reliable insurance coverage and having a dependable pension plan means for you and your family. Anything that I can do to help alleviate that stress and worry for anybody else is what I want to do. And that's really the basis of why I'm here today, and I would like to serve you, Texas state employees and retirees, on our ERS Board, to make sure that as much time, energy, service that we have given to the state of Texas, that that same commitment is given to us for our benefits and our future. My goals would be to make the best possible decision for us in our current and future benefits, and I will always vote in the best interest and keep fighting for us all. My area of expertise is serving our community, and now I'm asking for the chance to serve you. I'm thankful for this opportunity again, and I look forward to working with you and for you for our future. Thank you.
Thank you both. That concludes candidates' opening remarks. We'll now move into the question and answer period. We will rotate the candidates who gets to answer first as we move through the question. What makes you qualified to serve as an ERS trustee? Explain how your education, work, and volunteer experience qualify you to oversee a multi-billion-dollar retirement and insurance agency. Diane, this first question will start with you.
Oh, goodness. Okay, so I started with my area of expertise is service, right? But in my personal life, I do consider me and my family to be debt-free, and we do live a life of financial freedom. And I know a lot of people don't have the opportunity to say that, and it took a lot of time to get to that point, and I'm no stranger to living on ramen noodles and mac and cheese in order to reach that desired goal, right? So, I'm not a stranger to that. And it was hard to do that. And, again, I'm very blessed and honored that me and my family are in that position, but I want to remain in that position, and part of that is making sure that we do have strong benefits and a strong retirement. I am a little fearful of some things, I'll be honest. Like I said earlier, I am, I hope this is my last job, working for the state, and I want to retire from the state. But a part of that is making sure that we have a strong pension plan that I can rely on. My fear is that I see how we treat our retirees, and we expect them to live on what they're getting today from what they've been getting for the past 20 years. And why would I expect anything different when I'm a retiree than what we're seeing today? So, I am a strong advocate to making sure that we increase those benefits financially for our retirees so that I can look for that for my future and be able to sustain the life that me and my family have been living today.
Brian?
Thank you. So, I've graduated from the University of Texas with the Bachelor in Science of Civil Engineering, and then I've been working for the department for almost 37 years. You know, part of the, or, you know, main thing that this board does is focuses on the trust fund and making sure that trust fund is stable and can continue to provide the benefits to our state employees and retirees. And that trust fund is about valued at $40 billion these days. In my work at Techstat, currently, I'm responsible for a portfolio of about $100 billion in projects over a 10-year period. Currently, we have $60 billion of work, $60 billion of work under construction. So, these values or multi-billion dollar values are not unfamiliar to me, and so, I've worked with those type of numbers throughout my career. The other thing, you know, I've hired thousands of state employees, and then I've worked with thousands and thousands of more throughout my career, and I see the hard work that they do every day and how qualified they are and how skilled they are. And, again, the state of Texas made promises to those employees, and I want to make sure that we at ERS keep those promises. And to do that, we've got to make sure that we make the correct investment decision. We've got to make the correct benefit decisions. And then, you know, I know a lot of folks that I've worked with throughout my career that are now retirees, and we need to keep promises to them, and we also need to find ways to enhance their benefits, but we've got to do that smartly. We can't cripple the fund to make those decisions, but we really do need to work hard to come up with innovative ways to meet those benefit challenges. And then, the, you know, just the last thing that, well, one other thing, you know, I am on the Board of Trustees right now, and one thing I can say is, just to be fully transparent, I'm a better board member today than I was six years ago. Being on the board definitely helps me be a better board member. You know, I learned a lot in that first six years, and, you know, I feel a lot more confident in my ability to serve well on that board after serving six years and going through that learning process, so. But then, the last thing is, you know, we've really got to meet the demand of state employees.
That's your time, Brian. Thank you. Thank you both. As a trustee, how would you balance the sometimes varying needs of ERS's constituents? Brian, you're the first for this one.
So, I think the first thing we learn as a trustee is that we have, we're fiduciaries. And fiduciaries, really, the main thing of that is that we're responsible, or we need to make decisions based on all the members equally in all benefits, all decisions based on how they impact all members equally. And so, that's really the thought process that I have when I'm balancing the needs of different constituents. You know, I really focus on that, you know, what are their needs? Are their needs different from other parts of our members? And then, are we treating them because of a certain decision? Are we treating them equal or unequal? And I think it's really important that we keep that in the back of our mind when we make those decisions, that our responsibility is to all members and all members equally, and we need to keep that in mind when we're making those decisions.
Diane?
Well, as mentioned, you know, I've been serving probably the most difficult population here in Texas, right? Children who don't have a voice have tried to give them that voice and make sure that they are heard, make sure that they are safe, make sure they're not being abused or neglected. I do truly believe that everybody is equally as important, and I anticipate that if elected onto the board, that I will continue that service with noticing everybody's needs and listening to everybody's wants, but truly doing the best for us all. I consider myself with Child Protective Services and the job that I'm doing right now, servicing the most difficult population of children and youth that are currently in the foster care system. And I believe I treat them all equally and give them all the attention that they deserve. I think that's just the respectful thing to do, and I foresee that I'll continue to do that with anybody's needs or anybody's wants. Treat them with the same dignity, treat them with the same respect, hearing them. Sometimes, it's just listening to their wants. I know we can't do it all, but truly just sitting back and listening to what is needed and doing what is best. If a decision is made or needs to be made on the board, then I truly do wish to do what's best for us all.
Thank you both. Despite the considerable volatility in the financial markets, the ERS trust fund has performed very well, as measured against benchmarks and compared to other public employee pension funds. One of the most important things the board does is determine asset allocations of the fund. Please describe your approach to that fiduciary responsibility. Diane, it's your turn to respond first.
Well, I know ERS themselves, you know, employ over 400 employees, and those staff have been trusted to do a very difficult and hard job in making sure that our future is protected, both with our pension plan and our benefits plan. That is their area of expertise, and I would rely heavily on their opinions. I would rely heavily on the information that's being provided. I know they do a lot of hard work in getting reports and analysis done. I'm not taking that, I wouldn't take that away from them. That, again, is their area of expertise, and I would, if being able to serve on the board, and that ever came into question and a decision needed to be made, I'm, of course, going to be reliant on the professionals, right? That is their area, and I would build on that and I would trust that. I do trust a lot until I can't, but initially, that is who I am at heart, and that's what I would continue to do. They have been entrusted to do a job, and I know the higher executives and the bosses are holding their staff accountable for doing that. So, it's a lot of trust that goes into making those types of decisions. I know the importance of having, you know, strong benefits, having a strong pension plan, and that's the area that I would look at them to be providing the best possible information so that the board can make that informed decision.
Brian?
Yeah, so I agree that the asset allocation decisions that the board makes is some of the most important decisions that we make. I think the reason that those successes that you mentioned in the beginning of that question, the reason that we've been able to do that is because of the asset allocation and the good decisions that have been made in the past. And I would approach it the same way, that we've got to continue to have a diversity in our investments so that our fund, our investments are protected in good times and in bad times. I think the asset allocation, the way it's been designed, is when there are downtimes in the market, we are not as impacted because we have diverse investments and our values are protected. And then, when the market does come back up, we're able to take advantage of those gains. But there's a lot of pressure these days, because everybody is, it's just like in sports, everybody's an expert, and we get a lot of pressures to do things. And, you know, one of the recent pressures was, why don't we just invest the whole thing in index funds? And if you really dive into what we have to do and what the fund does and what the, you know, the bills that the fund has to pay, if there's a downtime in the market, which the index funds, they are very volatile, there's a downtime in the market and we've got to pay our bills, we're losing huge value, and we would never recover from that. And so, it's very important that we devise that asset allocation plan to make sure that those things don't happen, that we are protected in downtimes in the market and protect the value of that fund so that we can continue paying these benefits and benefiting our members.
Thank you both. The health plan, the health plan is currently in good financial shape, but in the future, the board may need to make some tough decisions to control health plan costs for the long-term stability of the benefits. How would you go about working through those financial issues? Brian, you may start.
So, we've been very fortunate, and really, it's through the staff at ERS doing good contracting practices and re-competitively procuring some of these services that have really protected the prices for us members on the healthcare program. But that's probably not going to last forever. We're probably not going to be able to continue to keep our prices down or keep our expenses level continuing in the market, so we're going to have to make some tough decisions. And some of those, you know, when I first ran, it was very important to me that when we make decisions like this, when we change providers, that is a big impact on members, because sometimes that means, sometimes it means you have to change doctors or change providers, and, you know, that's a big deal and can be, you develop a relationship with your medical care professionals, and if you have to change doctors, that's a big deal. So, we've got to consider that in addition to the benefits that we get from re-procuring contracts. But I do think that we're going to have those decisions to make in the future, and I think the way we continue to solve those is with good, solid procurement practices and the competitive drivers that drive those procurements help us with those prices.
Diane?
Oh, goodness. So, for me, I think what's important to look at is out-of-pocket costs to our employees and our retirees, especially our retirees who are on a set fixed income that hasn't increased in a very long time. I know that increasing those costs would really have a huge impact on them, and I realize that things need to be negotiated and possibly a new health plan, a new health provider needs to be made. But a priority of mine would making sure that those out-of-pocket expenses are kept as low as possible for us all. I'm not immune to not having any illnesses myself, and I know the importance of keeping those costs down and what it could mean if those costs, out-of-pocket costs, if they skyrocket. It could mean having to make a decision on whether you eat today or have the electricity on tomorrow, right? So, that is definitely one thing that I would keep as a top priority, is in the event that we are in a situation where we have to make some changes, that I look at the actual out-of-pocket expenses that our employees and our retirees are going to have to make and what kind of adjustments that would mean for their lifestyle and their life at home. My mom, she's a great, strong woman. She's been in human resources for over 40 years, and I know she's been in positions where she's had to negotiate these contracts. In fact, she worked for a company where they were self-insured, so she had to do those contract negotiations with medical providers and hospitals and surgeons and dentists and DME providers. I know it's a difficult thing. I know it needs to happen, but, again, my primary focus is making sure that we can get the lowest possible out-of-pocket expenses for us all.
Thank you both. In light of growing concerns about government efficiencies, rising prices, and market volatility, how would you ensure that ERS continues to offer competitive, stable benefits that meet evolving needs of both current employees and retirees? Diane, you'll start.
Well, like I mentioned at the beginning, working for the state of Texas has been my second job. I hope it's my last. But when I worked in the private sector and I found myself unemployed, it was in 2011. September 1st, 2011 was my first day of unemployment, and it was a good week where I was a little angry at things, and I did the bare minimum for looking for a new job. But after about that week and a half, I found myself at the Texas Workforce Solution Center every day, eight hours a day, and my job was finding a job. And after application, after application, after application. I got some bites, but I found myself looking into a program that was offered where the Texas Workforce Solution looks into the labor force, and they have like the listing of top 10, 20 jobs. Healthcare's one of them. I think healthcare is always one of them, and I was this close to going into the nursing field. And then, I got a call. I got a call from the state of Texas and got called for an interview, had the interview, got the job opportunity. And I found myself in a situation where, do I go the healthcare route and I was going to have, not have health insurance for two years, but I was going to have a stable future, right, after those two years? Or do I look at the benefits of working for the state and the medical benefits and the pension plan that is offered? And I decided at that moment that that's where I wanted to be. So, I know firsthand the importance of having our retirement pension plan is and our benefits plan, because that's why I'm here today, is because the plan that's offered and because of the benefits of working for the state, that's why I'm here. I would have been somewhere else. And it was mentioned earlier that that's how we keep and hire quality people, is because of the benefits that we offer. I believe that to be true, because, again, firsthand, that's why I'm here.
Brian?
So, I think it's important that the Board of Trustees continues to kind of drive staff to get the best prices for these benefits, and I think it's important that we continue to work with the legislature to fund some of these benefits, especially if they're benefit enhancements, because our members, our employees deserve those things. So, I do, you know, it is very volatile these days, and I think we need to continue to drive both our staff and the legislature towards solutions that keep these prices down.
Thank you. If elected, what would be your top priority? Brian?
So, the, my top priority is very similar to what it was when I ran the first time, but, you know, the legislature over the, starting two sessions ago and last session, and it looks like this session also, really did what they should have done and corrected the unfunded liability issues that this fund has had. So, they through the process of providing legacy payments to the fund, and then the last two sessions and maybe this session, an additional payment to the fund to help with the unfunded liabilities, we are now actuarially sound. Our fund is actuarially sound. It is no longer, does it have a depletion date where the fund will go to zero? And so, that's extremely beneficial to all of us, but it's extremely beneficial to this, to the members of the ERS. And my number-one goal is to make sure that we make decisions, drive prices, do whatever we have to do to keep this fund actuarially sound and continued on that path towards paying off the unfunded liabilities. My next priority would be to enhance benefits the right way, and I think that, I think I really do believe that it's time that we work to enhance benefits for retirees, but it's got to be, it can't be at the expense of my first goal. And so, there are innovative ways we can work with the legislature. There's a bill going through the legislature right now that will help in that regard if it makes it through. But we need to continue to look for innovative ways to enhance those benefits without it being an unfunded mandate or without it penalizing the actuarially soundness of our fund.
Diane?
If elected, I think my top priority would be seeing what we can do to help our retirees. I truly am worried about how they are being treated and what those expectations are from them to sustain their livelihood on not much if any of an increase, right, in the past 20 years. Like I stated before, I want to be retired with the state. I want to be them one day. And if we continue down the path that we're going through, why would I expect to be treated any differently than how we're treating them today? So, that would be my top priority, to see what can we do to... So that would be my top priority, to see what can we do to help them in any shape or form so that they have a better living, right? And we can keep them and we can have more people that want to be invested in the state and stay with the state. I know we invest a lot of money on training new staff, right? A lot of money training new staff. I don't want those good, quality staff to go anywhere. But if they continue to see that this is how we treat our retired staff, what other option are we giving them other than to look for somebody and somewhere else to work? So that would be my top priority, to see what we can do to help alleviate that stress for our retirees. I do hear that they're, you know, they're struggling, and we're not helping them in any way. You know, we try our best, but that would be one of the top things that I would look into and focus on.
Thank you both. How would you engage with ERS members and retirees during your tenure? Diane?
Much like I do now. I am not in a director or executive position in the Texas Department of Family and Protective Services. I'm a boots-on-the-ground person. You know, I have daily contact with children, again, some of the toughest children that we have in our Texas foster care system. That's the job that I do, and I anticipate that that'll just follow if elected on the board, is that I would engage them just like I do anybody else. I believe that everybody needs to be treated with respect. People need to be heard. People need to be listened to, and that's what I do. That's what I do for a living. That's what I would continue to do if elected on the board, is engage in the same way that I am and I have been doing for my time here with the state.
Brian.
Yeah, I think this is, it's a very important thing for us to do. It's not always easy to carry out, but some things that I've done, so, you know, we at the Texas Department of Transportation meet regularly with a lot of our retirees, so I get a lot of input from them during those meetings. I hold meetings with the department employees to get input on ERS issues and how the benefits are working for them and issues like that. I have gone with Porter when Porter's been out talking to members about benefits and getting some feedback. The other thing I think I can do more of is reaching out to some of these entities and associations that represent state employees and get more input from them. I think that would be very beneficial. And then the last thing, most people know that they can email me with questions and I'll take feedback from them. The folks at the Texas Department of Transportation know that, but I have gotten questions from other agencies and taken feedback, and that's still an open email policy that I have working with members.
Thank you both. The 89th Texas Legislature is in session right now. Briefly summarize one of the bills that you feel will affect the benefits programs administered by ERS. Brian, you may start.
I'm going to mention two, if that's okay. So that, I think, you know, I mentioned the legacy payments that the legislature is making, and they're, you know, they handle that through the budget bill. The current base budgets include those legacy payments. They're in conference committees now, but it does look good that those are going to make it through. So that's a very important bill that continues and continues to pay off our unfunded liabilities. The other bill was one I mentioned earlier, is a retiree enhancement, benefit enhancement, and it's, it proposes a, basically a 13th check, which would be the lesser of their standard payment that they're getting now, or $2,000. And it's proposed to be funded, that the legislature would fund it so it would not impact, negatively impact, the fund or actuarially soundness. So I think that's an important bill to follow, too.
Diane.
Yes, so I definitely fully support that 13th payment for our retirees, and I hope it pans out for them. I've talked about our retirees, you know, pretty much this whole time, and I hope that shows that I'm not a selfish person, right? Because I'm not retired yet, but I truly care about what they're going through. And I don't just think about myself and our current employees and families. I do think about our retirees who have dedicated so much to the state and have given so much to the state and to serve Texans that it's time for some give back to them. So that's the main thing that I'm looking at right now, is that 13th payment for the retirees.
Thank you both. We have one question we got from an audience member here right now. What is your long-term vision for ERS? How would you provide continuity on the board to ensure your vision? Diane?
That it remains strong, right? I mean, there's a lot of trust that state employees and their families and retirees put into ERS. Lot of trust that ERS is going to do what's right by the money that has been given to them, so that quality healthcare insurance can be sustained and that a pension plan that they can rely on and one day retire and not have to retire and work again, that they can look forward to that. So the long-term thing is to make sure that ERS is there and strong and doing the job that they said that they would do, and that they continue to hire quality people and experts to manage the money appropriately.
Thank you. Brian?
So my long-term vision, I'm probably going to start sounding like a broken record, but my long-term vision is that this fund continues to be actuarially sound and continues to be stable and can continue to make the payments and provide benefits to our members in the long run. And one way that, you know, I can make that continuity is to convince the other board members that are going to be on longer than me of the same thing, so that vision continues. And then just, you know, I believe in the direction this Board of Trustees is going right now and what we've been able to accomplish, and that's why I'm running again. And I think that just that helps with the continuity of that vision. But I really do, you know, that vision is that we don't ever, ever get to where we were before with billions and billions of dollars of unfunded liabilities in this fund. And we are, we've solved that with the legislature's help, and we can never get there again. We've got to make sure that we stay on course and stay actuarially sound forever.
Thank you. Now, we'll move on to closing remarks from both candidates. We will start where we left off in the ballot order. You have three minutes for closing remarks, and we begin with Brian.
Thank you. So again, I'm, you know, I'm running again, and I ran originally because I believe this responsibility and this agency provides extremely important service to the state of Texas. The state of Texas is getting huge benefits from being able to hire the best of the best, dedicated, hard-working, skilled employees. And the purpose of this entity and this board is to make sure that the promises that were made to those employees when they hired on and how we attracted them, and we, and some of them, we attracted them to maybe not the highest pay, but they've decided to come work for us because they really believe in our mission. We need to keep those promises, and this agency and the board plays a big part to make sure we keep those promises.
Diane.
Well, I want to thank you guys again. This is not a natural environment for me, but it has been a great experience, so thank you. Again, I just want to really continue the service that I've been providing Texans and just extend it to us as current Texas employees and retired employees. My goals would be just to make the best possible decisions for us all so that we do, don't have that stress, you know, in our future, that we can sleep at night restfully, that we have good people on our board and on our ERS staffing, because they're entrusted to do a very important job, and a lot of people are relying on them. It's in the hands of the voters, so this is the voters' chances to have a voice and a say on who they want to be their next board member. And again, I thank you for the opportunity.
I thank both of our candidates for their answers, for participating in today's forum, and for their interest in serving on the ERS Board of Trustees. And I thank you, our audience members here, and those who watch on the video recording. Before we end, I want to offer a few reminders and housekeeping items regarding voting. First, voting begins tomorrow, May 16th, at 8:00 a.m. Central Time, and will continue until Friday, June 20th, at 5:00 p.m. Central Time. You will be able to vote in one of three ways: online through the ERS election webpage, by returning the personalized paper ballot you will receive in the mail, or through the personalized link you receive by email if you have an email address on file with ERS. If you do not receive your personalized paper ballot by next Friday, May 23rd, and do not want to vote online or by direct mail, you can call and request one at 844-413-2929. You can also send an email to help+erstx@yeselections.com. That email address is on screen behind the candidates, but I'll spell it out. We encourage you to vote electronically. It's convenient and secure and saves money for the ERS Trust Fund. Please remember that you should vote only once. If you vote more than once, only your first ballot will be counted. Election results will be certified on July 24th, and the new trustees' term will begin September 1st. That concludes our forum. Once again, I'd like to thank our candidates, Brian and Diane, and wish them good luck. And thanks again to our audience. Please vote by June 20th.